I'd like to bring to order the San Rafael City Council meeting Monday, February 3rd to 10:20 and ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Hi, Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening. We did not meet in closed session, so therefore we'll go right to open time for public expression, as many of you know, if not everyone, by now, that it's an opportunity for you to address us on matters that you want to bring to our attention. We won't be able to deal with them because they're not on the agenda, but nevertheless interested in your input or questions or comments. So now would be the time, if there is something on your mind that's not on this evening's agenda. And I have one card for Salama. Good evening. How are you? Did I pronounce it correctly?
It's a new year, isn't it?
I know.
And you're just perfect.
Turning over my new leaf. That was my number one objective.
Salama Lox, San Rafael representative to the Commission on Aging. And I want to share with you what we're doing this Thursday. We're going to be meeting at the Margaret Todd Senior Center at 1560 Hill at 10 o'clock. And the topic is falling strategies, preventing falls, reduce injuries, safe landing. The speakers or presenters will be Carol Zeller, she's an RN, Gina Tucker Rogge, I think I pronounced that poorly. She's a doctorally prepared occupational therapist, and myself. And I'll be sharing nine of my memorable falls, of which eight was nothing more than a skinned knee. So you need to be there to hear what this is about, okay?
(laughing) Thank you. Thank you and good evening. Anyone else on the open time? Anyone? See none, we'll come back and ask for the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just two kind of updates that I think are of general interest. The first one is just talking about next steps on other housing-related items that are going on. As you know, at the last council meeting, we had, the council went through a series of housing policies that all had timeframes associated with them. So, other than tonight's action on 350 Mary Dale Housing Project, there's a number of things that staff's working on right now and will be coming back to you at various points over the next few months. This week, we hope to release a notice of funding availability, the NOFO that we talked about at the last city council meeting, for the Housing Trust Fund. We're thinking of doing that as kind of a pre-application, get something out very quickly that describes what we're looking for, and kind of see what the, what the universe of projects could be. And then we can go and ask for additional information with a subset if we want to, or with, with all of them. But we wanted to be able to get out quickly with, with notification of the Trust Fund and the types of projects that we're looking for. One of the highest priority things on the list was an inclusionary housing policy and development of Inu and Lufi. So staff is working on drafting the ordinance on that. The opportunity zone in the Canal neighborhood and any additional renter regulations that might be necessary, we're working on some initial thoughts on that to bring to the council for your feedback. The Lockloman Marina, I know the council's interested, and the community's interested in a construction update and what's going on with that project and affordability requirements. So we're planning on bringing that back most likely in March. And then also likely mid-March for the BioMarin Whistlestop Project, which is 67 senior housing units on the Whistlestop side. And that's around that same time period. And of course, we've got the General Plan 2040 and the Downtown Precise Plan going on at the same time. So, a lot going on in the area of housing and affordable housing that will be keeping the, the council busy over the next few months. The second update is on the essential facilities projects. And this was for the community's sake, a portion of the Measure E funds or a portion of the sales tax that's going towards essential facilities. So Station 52, which is the one near Whole Foods, and 57, which is the one near the Civic Center, are now fully complete, fully functioning, up and operating. And the modernization of Station 54, which is the one on Castor Avenue, Avenue near Bellum, and 55, which is Point San Pedro Road near Peacock Drive, the design is complete and we're just about ready to go out to bid on, on those two. Those are not complete rebuild, as the council knows, but more of a modernization of the existing facilities. And then the Public Safety Center is on track to be complete this summer. One of the reasons why I wanted to bring this up is because we're currently doing a call for artists on the Public Safety Center, where there's an art component on the inside of the building, kind of a mural, and then there's a larger kind of area that's designated for some sort of sculpture piece on the outside of the building. So the call for artists is specifically for that second piece, to get interested parties involved, hopefully from our community, that are interested in doing an art component that is reflective of our community in that space. So the call for artists is out there. We're using an online application for that. And it's, it's on a slightly different timeframe from the overall project. We want to make sure that we do it right, and we know that, we don't want to just pick the first thing that, that comes up, but we, we want to make sure that it's going to be, stand the test of time and, and, and be a great asset to that project. So, that's what's going on with, with all the essential facilities. I was going to very briefly mention Census Jobs Workshop, but I know we have that coming up later on the agenda, so just say Saturday, February 8th from 1 to 4 at Pickleweed Library is Census Job Workshops, and you'll hear more about that later on tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And since you didn't mention, I, I will later on the three workshops we've had on wildfire, unless you wish to.
Why don't I ask Christine to, to do that? Three workshops on community wildfire preparedness.
Sure. Christina Lillavich is Assistant City Manager. So we had three community workshops last week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday evening at the three community centers, Pickleweed, Terre Lynda, and downtown here at B Street. Fairly well attended, and kind of the next iteration of our feedback loop on that plan in anticipation of moving forward with next step. So as you know, Quinn Gardner, our emergency manager, did a great job. And Chief Senate was there as well, answering questions and really trying to make sure that we've got as, as much engagement and conversation going in the community about what specifically we're doing here in San Rafael.
Yeah, thank you. And, and the objective, of course, is to bring the framework that we adopted some time ago. It's gone through the committee of 15, I don't know, eight or nine meetings, and now community outreach, to bring back with Quinn's efforts, and I know you've been a big help as well, for council review and presumably adoption. So we know where we're going with this thing. Any case, thanks for your, thanks for your help on that. And with that, we'll turn to special presentation, Age Friendly Task Force Update.
Oh, bring this up. Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. My name is Sparky Spath, and I am one of the co-chairs of the San Rafael Age Friendly Task Force, along with Diana Lopez, who will be presenting the data in a few minutes. Thank you for the opportunity for the update tonight. Our task force, well, I have to leave it. Our task force is small, but mighty, and I would say persistent. And I'm going to read the names. And if you are present, please raise your hand. Chris Assimos, and Chris is also a Commissioner on Aging. Karen Conio, Gail Gifford, Linda Jackson, she's always here. Salama Lox, Diana Lopez, Patty McCully, who is a staff to the commission, to the task force, Susie Pollak, who is traveling, and myself. So, we're a lot of persistent women, and we're trying to get it done. I want to have a special shout out to the staff member Patty McCully, who's been really great to work with, and we really appreciate her as a city representative on our task force. And a big thank you to Susan Andrade Wax, who's been such great support for us throughout this entire process. We really couldn't do this without you. So as you recall, way back in 2017, in partnership with the city, we submitted an application to the World Health Organization and AARP to become an officially designated age-friendly city. And what that means, because I heard someone say, "What is age-friendly?", is that we're working with the city to assure that the built environment and the social structures and the infrastructure around the city is friendly to not ju, is age-friendly, at all ages. But our particular focus is on older adults. So, in that process, we, we will create a strategic plan, and we will have activities and programs and goals and evaluations and the whole shebang to make sure that we can get to the next step in the age-friendly process. We were very lucky, shortly after we received our designation, to receive a matching fund grant from Marin County Health and Human Services and the City of San Rafael, that helps support our development of our strategic plan. We began by offering a series of trainings on reframing aging, because we felt that it was really important to use the appropriate language and terminology, and to address and look at ageism in all aspects as we engage the community and as we develop our plan. Our second step was to focus on the needs assessment process, which has taken us a little bit of time, but I think we're through it now. And we did create and implement a survey that was electronically sent out and mailed to all residents in Marin over 60 years of age. And the highlights of that data will be shared by Diana. The next steps in our process, now that we have most of our data, is just a little bit more data from four focus groups, because we feel these are special and strategic populations that we haven't really seen represented in our data so far. And that will be the Center for Independent Living, the SPAR Center, the Vietnamese and Latino communities that didn't really fill out the survey, although we did have it in Spanish. And interesting enough, older women who rent, as we find that this is becoming an increasing population in San Rafael and throughout the county. So we'll gather that information concurrently while we're writing this plan, which will happen this winter, spring. We hope to have it completed in four months, and then we'll visit you again and ask for your feedback and your approval. And then we will send the report on to the World Health Organization, and then we'll begin the work in the plan. So, we did key informant interviews in the community and with key, with department heads here in San Rafael. They were very informative. Everyone gave us their time, and it was, it was very, an interesting process for us. We also did a few key informant interviews in the community with Omar Carrera at Canal Alliance, Jewish Family and Children's Services, who has a large program for older adults, and Dominican University. So several themes emerged in these key informant interviews. One of them was a concern about isolation as our residents age. And what, how can we address that? And we know that isolation is a key factor in the health span of older people. And a related issue was how to improve our outreach opportunities to these residents. How do we get to them when they're homebound or they're not participating in any civic engagements? And also, an interest in increasing our intergenerational programs. So for instance, when we talked to the librarian, he told us that he would like to increase the program that they do for taking books to the homebound. And they, I think they take, maybe they have 400 or so people that they support that way, but there could be a lot more supported. And that was interesting. Chief Bishop would like to improve outreach to protect older adults from scams and exploitation. The fire chief at the time was very excited about a pilot program that calls, that has a nurse practitioner and a psychologist paired with the EMTs when they go out on calls, and they do a health and safety assessment at the same time. And they can do this a little bit more with follow-up with these vulnerable clients, so that we can prevent the falls and incidents that call the EMT in the first place. And we are all concerned about emergency preparedness, especially for our vulnerable elders who are often the ones that lose their lives unfortunately in these tragedies. So these are just a few examples of some of the strategies and programs that we will probably include, most likely, in our strategic action plan. And with that, I will turn it over to Diana for the survey.
And while you're approaching, I'll point out that Linda Jackson is with us. You missed your introduction just a moment ago.
(laughing) You weren't introduced, but you weren't here. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to present this information to you. What we did as a task force is we went through the data, and we picked out some information that we thought would be relevant and of importance and use to you this evening. And so the first, and the way that you read this is you read it from the top and then clockwise. So, this is just some information about, do you rent or own your primary residence? And you can see that the bulk of the folks that we, that answered our survey either own with a mortgage or without a mortgage, but a significant proportion of folks rent. And then, what kind of, what type of residence is your primary home? And again, from the top. And 57% are single-family homes and 32% multi-unit buildings. So this was just to get some base information. And then, it started to get really interesting here when we started to talk to people or ask people about what, if they want to stay in their home, what kind of changes do they need to make? And you can see, the, the key is down at the bottom. And you can see how people were, were responding to this. Some of the easy things, people said, a lot of people said that they would do. Some of the things that were harder, folks didn't really want to deal with at this particular time. But just some interesting information as you move forward and are thinking about how to help people age in San Rafael. And this next slide is what are the factors that would impact your decision to move? And what we really found is that 61%, which is a huge percentage, want to live and stay in San Rafael. And they want to live in a situation where that supports their independence. And some, you know, the cost of living just starts, as you, these slides go on, you'll see it creep into all the, all the information that we gathered. This was an interesting slide, how do people get around? To shop, to visit the doctor, running errands, or socializing? And it was heartening to see that how many people walk, which makes it the city more viable for a lot of people. And this was a slide that we really felt that we wanted you to see, because although 71% of folks that are over 60 hadn't fallen down in the last year, there are 29% that had fallen at least once or twice. And so when we think about safety, public, public services, safety in the home, we thought that it was a, a key finding, so we brought that to you this evening. And are you aware of specialized ride services from, in, in the area? And you can see that six, folks are doing a good job of getting that information out, but we still have quite a slice of the pie of folks that could use that information. And I thought this was a slide that would be of particular interest to you, because these are the kinds of civic engagements that people have participated in, in the last year. And I should say that the entire dataset is available to anyone who would like to have it or find it useful. Where do you typically go for continuing education? It was interesting that university or community colleges, and online. And online will become a theme as we go through these slides, because we were surprised to find that there are many, many older adults who are getting, are doing things online than we thought that there might be. And how important do you think it is to have the following things happening in your community? And clear publicity about social activities and conveniently located entertainment venues seem to be very important. And also, yeah, so those two really jumped out, volunteer activities. This is a community with a lot of volunteers. And this is a particularly important slide, because you can see that the 54% are folks that are retired and not working at all. But there's a significant portion of folks who are working or would want to work. And one of the things that comes up around this is that if people want to stay in Marin County, they may have Social Security or retirement, but if they can work, they can actually make enough money to stay here, which is a really key component to all of this. And this slide was particularly interesting to me. I didn't have any idea how this, what this would look like, what the results would be. But it's really interesting that if you're looking for work, how likely is it that you'll work for as long as possible, rather than choosing to retire? And more and more people are choosing to work. As we live longer, the need to work longer, and as you get older, is becoming more and more apparent. And, and opportunities to work are difficult to come by for folks that are 60 and over. Where do you turn for information? And, and as you can see, in this slide, many, many people are turning to the internet. So we're beginning, you know, when we look at sort of the aggregate of the information that we gathered, what we're seeing is that more and more people that are over 60 are using the internet. And so it's a real, this is a real opportunity to, to sort of beef up those, those options for people. So, how important are the following things to you? So, an internet resource for community information that's easy for use, to use, and access to community information in one source, and somewhere to call for community information that's easy to use. And the group really felt that we wanted to show you this information, because we think that this is something that we can really do, and, and, and that will make a, make a difference. Just some demographics. Who are the people that answered the survey? And as Sparky said, we'll be doing focus groups, because there are a number of groups of people that we didn't get to with this survey, and we really felt that it was really important. And then, oh, and disability. So, 76% of the respondents said that they don't have a disability, but a good number of folks said that they do have a disability themselves or their partner, or both thems, themselves and their partner. Okay, there we go. And your household income. So this is the last slide, but we just wanted to give you sort of a slice of the things that we asked, and some things that came up for us. And whatever few minutes we have left, we really want to take questions and answer your questions.
Thank you. I have, I have a couple of questions. You've made reference to 60. I'm assuming that's the baseline from what you start.
I'm sorry.
I said you mentioned 60 years of old, and we all know that 58 is the new 38, or whatever it is Amy said the other day. So 60 is the, the elderly, in your definition?
Well, in the, in the survey that we did.
For the survey.
Yeah, for the survey.
The survey?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's good. And those that you talked with, you listed quite a number, and impressive group as it, as it is. I was also thinking of Whistlestop, since we're doing a lot with Whistlestop. And have you talked with them? Because, of course, they have, first have knowledge of some of the issues you've referred to.
Absolutely.
Yeah, good, good. And then, also, I'm not sure what my question is, or maybe it's an observation. I made a presentation to Smith Ranch Homes last week. If you know where that is, it's out by the, yeah. And it's an impressive group. I was, I was pleased to be there and talk with them about a few things happening here in San Rafael. So that might be also an interesting group to, to talk with. Like I said, I was impressed with the, the executive director, John, I've forgotten his last name, but John, in any case, so you might talk with him. So, for someone that's partially colorblind, that reading the, the index is a challenge. I don't know about the rest of you, but it's like, yikes, which one is that? You're okay?
I hope that, I hope that you have a copy of it, because it's easier, easier to read, but I will, I take, take your point.
Well, thank you. That's why I'm not flying for the Navy. I think it is. In any case, I found the, the information, as I sorted it out, quite interesting, quite frankly. It's good, good. Other questions, observations? Kate?
Let's have comments. So hats off to all of you. Really, it's all of you that brought the age-friendly initiative to our community a couple of years ago, and really, it's been going forward because of you. So we are incredibly grateful and realize that we wouldn't be here talking about it if it wasn't for all of you really being focused on it. And the city now is going to continue to support and be committed to the changes in supporting older adults in our community. And to Sparky's point, when we're supporting the older adults, it also benefits younger people as well. I mean, it's, it's across the spectrum. So, and your timing is also perfect, because we're working on the general plan, and I know Sparky's been a part of that. So we're really working to introduce, it's not like we're just sitting here waiting till the report's done, and then we're going to start moving forward on policy. It's already starting to happen with the update of the general plan. We're starting to weigh and consider these options. So I wanted to thank you for that. I would love a copy of all of the data.
Be happy to provide that to you.
And maybe you can talk about the birthday party. Is someone going to talk about the birthday party?
I think Sparky was going to talk about it.
Yes.
So, one of our first official acts as an Age Friendly Task Force is hosting a birthday party this Sunday at the Community Center, 3 to 4:30. And this is for the 90-plus crowd. So people, I can't even say those long words.
Non-agenarians.
The 90-plus crowd. And so we're going to have, yeah, so the invite is, "San Rafael Age Friendly invites you to a celebration honoring you, our city's non-agenarians and centarians, 3 to 4:30 on Sunday, February 9th." So we hope to have a fun afternoon. We have, we sent out invitations, thank you, Susan, to the voter registration list. And there were like 700 people that were over 90 in San Rafael on that list. We've only heard from about 50 of them, but it's a good start. And I think some more will show up by Sunday, but we hope you can stop by.
I'll be there. I'll be there. I'll always blow up some birthday candles.
We, we dropped off invitations to all of you, so we hope that, we really hope that you think I'm enjoying this.
No, absolutely.
Thank you.
What is our oldest, as our being San Rafael, what is our oldest resident?
We might, I don't know. Do we know? I don't, I don't know if we know, but we'll see who's the oldest on Sunday.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Thanks for all the work you've done. Anyone else comment, by the way? No, no? Good. Okay, then in that case, anyone from the public wish to comment on this agenda item? See none, we'll come back and have a special presentation from Cedars. Good evening.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Chuck Green, and I'm the Executive Director at Cedars. I've been there for 11 years. I came as an interim executive director, and given the nature of the place, I stayed for the last 11 years. Thanks for the time to talk with you about the ways in which we might more deeply engage with you, the City of San Rafael. Just a quick overview, Cedars has been supporting individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities for more than 100 years now, founded in 1919. So we just finished our centennial. And there, when Cedars was first founded, there were babies. That's who came to Cedars in cribs. And we still have people now in their 70s, and we actually have a very healthy gentleman who's 85. He's been living at Cedars for 85 years. So basically, we, we have 200 individuals, adults, that we support every day, residential services and 10 group homes, as well as a new main campus. It's 10 years old now, so, but it's still a $10 million great new campus. And then we have three-day programs. And one is the Textile Arts Collaborative, which is a ranch at the end of Fifth Avenue through the cemetery, 23 acres and their alpacas, lots of other animals, organic gardens, weaving, a whole bunch of different things that happen out there. Cedars Fine Arts Studio, primarily doing a range of different fine arts works. And then Community Connection, where our participants volunteer in groups of two to six or seven at different nonprofits throughout the county. six or seven at different nonprofits throughout the county. And that, that's obviously a great program, all of them are. But Cedars has been remarkably successful, largely because we know very clearly what our mission is. And we get extremely competent folks to work at the organization. And we're all focused on really the exact same mission, and that's to get the lives of those 200 individuals to be as creative and productive and joyous as possible. But it really all starts with unconditional love. That's the real foundation for the happiness that our participants can experience. And if you walk in the door, you just see it immediately. It's, it's, it's not hidden at all, it's very, very evident. But that seems to be the real key, to feel deeply loved. There's an 80, 80-year, $20 million Harvard research project on happiness, and the conclusions are absolutely very clear. More than power, or money, intelligence, or where you were born, or who you were born to, the key to happiness is having love in your life and having a sense of belongingness. And that's clearly what we try and focus on as much as possible. That's how it starts, and it's just critical to have that connection with one another. And it then sets the stage for everything else to happen, including then our little centennial video, which we put out, which says, "Love is Here to Stay."
It's a new day at Cedars, and participants are excited to begin again. A journey of discovery and growth that empowers them to live creative, productive, joyous lives. Since its founding 100 years ago, generations of individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities have called Cedars home. It began in 1919 with Cora Myers and Gabrielle Renshaw, two fearless visionaries who dedicated themselves to people with disabilities. They believed that every person deserved a full and meaningful life, an approach to advocacy which remains as relevant today as when Cedars welcomed its first young students. Here, children flourished and learned new skills. They played and had fun. Children who were once isolated and ignored by society found a place where they were encouraged to lead creative, productive, and joyous lives.
I actually love Cedars. It's my joy to be here. I am really loved at the program.
Cedars essentially changes lives. I've seen individuals move into Cedars, become a day program participant, and when they start, they have very little skills, and they blossom here.
I decided to live at Cedars because I want to be more independent. It's a great campus, and I have my own apartment.
Having her own apartment with everything provided, she was happy to move in. It was a very easy transition.
We had an absolutely wonderful tour. We saw the gardens, the animals, the weaving, and looked at all the beautiful artwork here, and we were just blown away. Eureka, we found it.
The opportunity for their loved one to possibly learn to weave, or learn to be a gardener, or an artist, just the variety of opportunities we have here is really astonishing.
Creativity blossoms where their individuals find inspiration working with animals, creating art, weaving, gardening, or volunteering in local nonprofits.
Being a member of the community here changed Toni significantly, and it's changed her for so much the better.
Having Cedars participants be part of our community really enriches the community of San Anselmo and all of Marin.
The struggle to be treated as individuals with rights and unique capabilities has never been easy. Cedars began the same year women suffragettes earned the right to vote. And that same commitment to equality inspired generations of Cedars' parents, family members, and staff, who became leaders in the movement to guarantee access to public education, job training, and new opportunities. During the 1960s and 1970s, they joined the wider fight for civil rights with the passage of the Lanterman Act, one of a series of laws that improved life for individuals with developmental disabilities.
Cedars is like a family. We have so many staff that have worked here for decades. We have residents who've lived here for some 70 and 80 years. And the care that runs between the staff and the participants and residents runs very deeply.
She was at a group home that was pretty much the opposite of what Cedars is. She was so unhappy, there was nothing to do. So we pulled her out of there, and we spent four years on the waiting list, and finally a bed opened up. And I jumped on it. And her life at Cedars is wide open. She is in the safest, healthiest, most loving environment that I could imagine. The people who work in her home love her. And as a mother of someone with special needs, I cannot tell you what a load that is off my shoulders.
I feel like I've been here in Cedars for such a very long time, and I can't even put in words to it. It's just, it's just thank you to my mom for just letting me be part of Cedars.
I love you.
Cedars was built on love. The longstanding vision and strong will of many dedicated advocates has shaped Cedars' history. If the founders came here today, they'd say, "I can't believe what an astonishing place Cedars has become. You're doing exactly what we dreamed of."
I feel kind of happy, enjoy it. It's, you know, kind of like a new life.
Thanks. You know, just in the past, though, I'd say five years ago, we've spent a lot more time and energy trying to get better integrated into the community, with a special focus of trying to de-stigmatize just what it means to be different. And we've been particularly successful with the town of San Anselmo, and that's largely because that's where the main campus is. We decided to start there. And now we're branching out. We really love to find ways to collaborate with the city of San Rafael. In San Anselmo, we started out by giving tours. We gave Deb Stutzman a tour, and she was captured by Cedars, and then, and she was the town manager at the time. Then we, she had three different tours with her staff, they all got to see the place. And we started doing things. So we are working with the San Anselmo Arts Commission on a whole variety of projects. The History Commission, we've worked them on doing research for Cedars in the town. The San Anselmo Library itself used our bookmarks, they were woven out at the ranch for about 500 of their kids participating in the summer. And the Town Council approved having Cedars run a farm stand outside in the town during the week. And we, we've had a small pop-up farm stand in San Rafael, which we'd love to continue also. And then for the last two years, Cedars has been in partnership with the town of San Anselmo as part of their San Anselmo Country Fair Day, where we kind of took over Imagination Park with booths and activities. Were in the parade, brought in a marching band, Ferris wheel, a whole bunch of different things. And we'd love for this group to learn more about Cedars. So we do have a tour set up on February 11th for Susan Andrade Wax, and would love for as many of you to come on that as possible. If you can't do it, then we'll do it anytime that works for you. And that invitation is extended to anybody here. It's worth doing. It's a couple hours you'll never regret, really. And so we're happy to do that. We're also, very easy for us to hold a lunch out at the Textile Arts Center. All the food's vegetarian out there, so healthy living's important too. But thanks. It's real important for us to reach out and bring our folks into the community and vice versa. So we look forward to doing it.
Well, I think it's fair to say that we welcome you with open arms and applaud you for what you've done. And this, this piece is, it's really, it's really touching in, in many ways. So can't thank you enough for what you've done, particularly in San Anselmo, as a reference point. But like I said, I think it's fair to say that we would certainly welcome your efforts in San Rafael as well. We have our needs also, so you're, you're, you're welcome to show up anytime.
Well, thanks, that's great. Creative, productive, and joyous is our theme, so happy to do it with you. Thanks very much.
Thanks, thanks for the presentation this evening. Anyone, anyone from the public wish to address us on this item? See a lot of smiles, so I think that probably says quite a bit. Thank you once again. And we'll now turn to our consent calendar, of which we have items, what is it, number 5A through 5C. These items would, will be acted upon with a single motion unless someone wishes to have an item polled. Anyone, item polled? No? Anyone from the audience, public, who wish to address us on these consent items? Anyone? In which case we'll turn, a motion would be in order.
Move approval of consent calendar?
Second.
Second, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gablin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
Aye on that matter, carries 4-0. We'll now turn to item 6A, consensus, consensus, census, 2020. Thinking about consensus, how are we going to join together? Ethan, help me out here, man. Get me out of this predicament.
Census 2020.
There you go.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to start us off again. Good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I put your initial by it too, and I apologize.
I just wanted to make a couple of opening remarks on this important topic. A few thank yous, just to start, if I may. The Canal Alliance, Community Action Marin, and the County of Marin have been our real primary partners in working on this outreach effort in the last year, really. You're going to hear from Stephanie McNally, who's in the audience, is going to give the second half of the staff presentation. But she, she owes a lot of, we owe her a lot of gratitude for her leadership and her consistent commitment and passion for the, for this work. So I wanted to start off with that. Also, I wanted to thank both the mayor and vice mayor for their support. They both serve on, you both serve on the steering committee, the Marin Complete Count Census Steering Committee, and provide leadership along with the other four, three undercounted areas and their elected officials. And that work continues. And I also really wanted to extend a thank you to the city staff behind the scenes who have been working really, really hard over the last year. Ethan, Brenna, and the city clerk's office, library and recreation staff, and the audience, Jill and Steve Mason from library and recreation. I just came from a meeting at the Canal Alliance where there, everybody's really rolling up their sleeves to do the right thing, putting, putting a lot of work into the effort that we hope to give you a good update on tonight. Lastly, I just wanted to mention that one of the reasons I think this work is so important is when we're looking at kind of the foundation of our democracy. This is the only thing that is in our democratic process, that there's no requirement to be anything but here on April 1st. And the messaging around how important it is to have every member of our community counted is a really important message. So I'll turn it over to staff to, to fill you in on the details. Ethan?
Thanks, Christine.
Thanks, Christine. So as Christine mentioned, I'm going to start off with some opening slides, and then I'm going to pass it on to Stephanie to finish out the presentation. So census is not just April 1st, 2020. There's been a lot of effort going on behind the scenes for the last year, year and a half, to try to make sure that we have a complete count. Really, efforts in Marin County started in earnest, November, December, 2018, where we were kind of in this planning phase, so getting everybody together, trying to understand kind of how are we going to make sure that we get the resources where they need to be in order to make sure everyone is counted. Over the last year, we've been in an education phase. It's where we're talking to community organizations, to people interested and stakeholders interested in the census, to make sure that they know what's coming along. But we're now moving into a very crucial motivation and edu, evaluation, sorry, motivation and activation phase. So motivation is really coming forward right now because we're about to get online forms in the mail, there's new ways that we're taking the census. Lot has changed since 2010, the last time this occurred. And then really, starting April 1st, we need to make sure everybody has submitted their census forms, and if not, knowing what happens next. So there have been a lot of changes in the last year. One of the, the few things that we really want to make sure that we just reiterate again is that there's not a citizenship question on the census this year. That was removed. So if questions do come up, we want to be very, very clear, there is, there's not going to be a question on the census that asks whether or not you are or not a U.S. citizen. Additionally, by law, your information cannot be shared with any government agency, law enforcement, or landlords. There is significant penalties for doing that for Census Bureau workers. Additionally, the census is incredibly important. Census data is used to bring federal funds to Marin, accounting for schools, healthcare, roads, and other programs that support the residents of San Rafael. So what I mean by that is, there's really five main areas where census data is, is used specifically. The first and probably most directly related to San Rafael is federal funding. So based upon the decennial, I think I got that right, census, they use those numbers for the next 10 years to determine federal funding. Additionally, that's reapportionment and redistricting, so that's your U.S. representatives. That's going to be really decided based upon this census for the next 10 years. Additionally, civil rights enforcement uses this data, policymaking and planning, so all of the information that staff comes back with, most of that comes from the census. And then finally, businesses access this information a lot in when they're making business decisions. So when it comes to dollars and cents, really, the census matters quite a bit because right now, the state estimates that for every one person that's not counted, we lose $1,000 per year for the next 10 years. So if we look at the percent of non-response from 2010 for San Rafael, we're looking at about $4.6 million in federal funding from, from individuals from 2010 that didn't get counted. Over 10 years, we're talking $46 million. So it's a significant amount of money, and that's why the census is so important. So as Christine mentioned, we've been doing a lot over the last 18 months. And again, want to just reiterate the work that Stephanie McNally of Canal Alliance has been doing. Over the last 12 months, we've given 60 presentations, 65 community meetings, 27 trainings, and 10 census job workshops. And it really is a testament to the work of the entire Marin County team, trying to make sure that we're, we're educating and getting the information out about the census itself. And with that, I'm going to pass it on to Stephanie to take over for the rest of the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to take over here and give a little more context. So some of you may have seen this slide already, I use it quite a bit, but according to the Race Counts website, Marin County ranks first, most racially disparate county in California. That is, we are the most segregated county in all of California. Is the 2020 census going to change that? No, but it's going to give us a lot of information to help us work towards equity in the county. And so that's why the census is so very important, because it isn't just about federal funding, it's really about equity in the county. So the focus in the county has been predominantly to make sure our historically undercounted communities are counted here for the 2020 census. And just to give you a definition of a historically undercounted community, these may be populations that are hard to identify, hard to reach, hard to persuade, hard to interview, some or all of the above. And I'm sure all of you can think of individuals who would fall in some of these categories. We have a list here. This is not a comprehensive list, but it's a list that we've been using in terms of our outreach, bringing along partners, in terms of making sure they have funding to do outreach, and also in our speaking engagements, trainings, job workshops. So all of this is focused to make sure that we do not undercount these groups in this So I just wanted to take a step back for a moment. When we first started this a year ago, we were trying to figure out how to determine where those hard-to-count areas were in Marin County. And we did that by using a database that the state of California developed called SORD, Statewide Rapid Outreach Deployment. And they came up with, they have data from the Census Bureau, but also sources from throughout the state. So they combine all sorts of data for us to use in census outreach. They came up with their own index. to determine if a census tract was hard to count. They used 14 demographic, housing, and socioeconomic variables. They created a score on a scale. Total score range was anywhere from zero, which means you're super easy to count, to 154, which means you are really, really hard to count. And we use the average index for the state, the 37, as our threshold. So, so there are a lot of census tracts in the county that 10 years ago had great, you know, 80% response rates. So we weren't really, while we know that they'll get that mess, we'll get that messaging out, we knew we had to focus on the, the census tracts that were above that 37. So just a quick review of the county. West Marin, technically there's only one census tract that goes above 37. But because of all the challenges in West Marin, rural, they're all PO boxes, a lot of different hard to count groups, we actually expanded that to four census tracts. And we've been working with different organizations in West Marin to do outreach. The next hard to count tract was in Nevada. They're at a 49. Again, been working with Nevada to do census outreach. San Rafael has three hard to count tracts, one in Terolinda and two in the Canal neighborhood. And the tract where Canal Alliance is located, our hard to count index is 105. That is the hardest to count tract in all the county. And then finally, we have Marin City, they're at 79. So those were the areas that we focused on in the past year in terms of strategizing on outreach, building partnerships, and now everyone's moving into action now that we're motivating. So a lot of different events are taking place and a lot of direct outreach. So just to give you an idea, when we started about a year ago, this was the structure we came up with. We have a steering committee, which Christine mentioned, of electeds across the county. We also built our Complete Count Committee. We've only met as a very large group twice, once in March of last year and then just last week. And the Complete Count Committee was just to bring all of these different types of organizations together to help us strategize for census outreach. But once we met back in March, we immediately broke up into smaller groups to be more, more effective. And these groups were focused around those four areas where we have hard to count census tracts, so San Rafael, Marin City, Nevada, and West Marin. So those groups met between July and December of last year. We put together an implementation plan that we submitted to the state of California. And now, beginning in January, we are going to move into the next phase, which is action teams. And this is really not just the people who joined us at the beginning with the Complete Count Committee, but these are all the organizations who have been funded either by private foundations, by the county, by the state to do census outreach. And we're all coordinating those activities. So we've sort of shifted from a regional base to a more countywide base, focused on the different activities that we're doing. So for example, community outreach, local media, questionnaire assistance centers. So we've reorganized ourselves a bit to be able to have people share the activities they're working on and support each other. So a few things I wanted to share with you, what our barriers to response are. So the Census Bureau noticed over the last few censuses, decennial censuses, that the response rate was going down. So technically, we're only counting 70% of our whole population. So they noticed this, it's declining, and actually, they're, they're thinking it's going to be in the lower 60s this time around. And so they commissioned a study, focus group surveying, quite extensive, that came out a couple of years ago, on what they thought would be the barriers to response in 2020. And there are four. The first one is fear and lack of trust. And there are people who have had lack of trust in government for many years. So this isn't a new thing. But I think there is a lot of fear and lack of trust around the citizenship question. It won't be in the census, but that really created a lot of fear and lack of trust in some of our communities here in San Rafael. The digital format. So this is our first online survey, which is probably great news for younger adults who might not participate if they had to fill out a paper form. But we have a lot of other communities where they might be more challenged to do an online survey. So it's kind of a, kind of a mixed barrier. But we definitely have to make sure that people know that they can take it online, by phone, or by paper, and that there will be help in all three of those formats. Confidentiality and privacy concerns. People are concerned about what the government's going to do with that information, and if it's going to come back and harm them personally, or their families, or their communities. So there's a lot of concern. The other part of this is with the first online survey, there's also cybersecurity that is on a lot of people's minds. So that confidentiality and privacy concerns is sort of a mix. And I have another slide further down that actually talks about how your data is protected by the Census Bureau. And then finally, apathy. A lot of people just don't make the connection between representation or federal funding, or the information we get from the census with their day-to-day lives, when in fact, there is a really strong connection. So for us, there's been a whole year of educating as many people as we can about how the census will impact their lives, their families' lives, their communities. For me, that's the low-hanging fruit, right? That's just information that we can put out there that people realize, oh, I should participate in this because it's going to make a difference in my community. So one of the things we have been doing is partnering with United Way Bay Area. They are our regional community-based organization selected by the state, have been supporting us. And with them, we have a platform. It's a text campaign. So you text the word "count" to the phone number up there, 415-338-9887, and you're going to be signed up to receive text messages about the census in, in Marin County. We're not going to start sending texts till closer to the census, but March, April, May, into June possibly, when there's non-response follow-up. So this is a way to remind people the census is coming, what's coming in the mail, where you can find a questionnaire assistance center, that sort of information. This is a way for us to push it out to the community, not just wait for people to hop on our website, or, or maybe get that information elsewhere. So this is really leveraging technology to do outreach. And we actually have it in several languages, as you can see on the slide. So not just in English and Spanish, but I think it's 12 languages total. The data is secure on a secure server with United Way Bay Area, and we will delete everything after the census. So this is purely for census outreach. So confidentiality. So I'm going to give a little more detail to it. Ethan, share with you. So there are extremely strong laws in place to protect census data. It's called Title 13. Nobody needs to memorize that. But it's a federal statute. It's been around for a long time. As a matter of fact, it was put into place after Japanese internment, because those families were rounded up using census data. So this was put in place so that would never happen again. Basically, it's an oath that every current census taker and, or census employee, or former census employee takes. And if they have any wrongful disclosure, it can lead to a $250,000 fine and/or five years in prison. So the Census Bureau is really serious about the confidentiality of the data that all of us share with the Census Bureau. The Census Bureau is also not allowed to share your personal information with anyone. That includes ICE, the police, law enforcement, landlords, or, or any government agency. And Title 13 cannot be overturned by executive order. It would have to go through the House and the Senate to change it. And then finally, the Census Bureau cannot share information about you as an individual. This is a really important message. It's so important to have people participate. And if their only concern is that their information's going to somehow get in the wrong hands or be used against them, then that will, that's a huge deterrent. And we really want to remove that barrier to response. Now, you may have seen somewhere out there that people can look at old census forms. And, and you can actually. Researchers and organizations like ancestry.com can get ahold of individual census data, but it, when you participate in the census this year, your detailed information will not be available for 72 years. So we have this great historical treasure trove from old censuses, but the more recent ones, that individual data is not available. So you can't, so I just want to put that out there, because some people will say, well, I've actually seen a comp, you know, a copy of an old census form from my, when I was doing ancestry.com. And that is true. But when you participate now, your data is secure for 72 years. It cannot be released on an individual level. So a little bit about San Rafael outreach activities. We've engaged the libraries and recreation centers, who will be setting up questionnaire assistance centers. They're called QAC. So now you're in on the census lingo. In all three library locations, downtown, Pickleweed, and Northgate, I have gone on a huge campaign to train everybody about the census. I've hit all the public libraries in the county. So they've gone through what we call Census Champion Training. And the city of San Rafael is using, is utilizing all of its social media and communications networks to motivate residents and census participation. So even last fall, we made sure there was a two-page ad in English and Spanish in the activity guide, for example. We did that as well in Nevada. So we've been utilizing it right for months now. But as we're kind of on the run-up, we really want to get people's attention, especially right after the primaries, when the census hits. And then we also are promoting census jobs. So right now, and many of you may have read this in the IJ, but Marin County, we are behind. We are at less than half our goal for census job hiring. That's, that's the Census Bureau's responsibility, but we as a county have really rallied to help them hire census workers. Those are the census takers that knock on your door after the self-response period between March and April. So May, June, and July, we need those census workers out there. And that risk of historical undercount is greater if we don't have enough people on the ground for that non-response follow-up. So the fact that we're, we're in February and we're still not even halfway there, we're all taking that to heart and ramping up our efforts even more so. We've been doing this since September of last year. So we've actually had several jobs workshops here in San Rafael. Our next one is coming up on February 8. And here, I've got a slide for it. So it's Saturday, February 8, at the Pickleweed Community Center Library. There's a big computer room in there from one to four. Census jobs pay $25 an hour. And they are going to keep the applications open, the website to apply through March 15. But if you come to a workshop, we'll have volunteers and actually Census Bureau recruiters there helping you go through the entire application process online. And then finally, I just wanted to share another project in the works here. We are planning a census celebration for San Rafael. We're doing it the weekend before the official census day on April 1st. But the census will have already launched by then. So people will begin receiving their invitation to participate the week of March 12. So we're planning a, a big celebration. We've got a few partners there, but we're, we literally had a meeting tonight, collecting partners at this point. Live music, food. We're going to have a questionnaire assistance center there so people can actually participate in the census at the event. And we're hoping to get organizations and businesses to provide tables with games and just a very festive, fun celebration to really promote the 2020 census and participation. So thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time. There's more information at our census website, marinsensus2020.org. And we're always updating and adding to it. So if anyone goes there and they have any questions, or something's missing that they need, please feel free to contact me. Stephanie McNally at Canal Alliance.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Your enthusiasm is overwhelming. It's wonderful, actually. And a little bit surprised that we haven't been able to get enough hired at this point with, with that enthusiasm. But I know it's difficult. Thanks for doing that. I was, not at the last meeting, I was preparing for something that afternoon, so I apologize. But I have one question. It's sort of been nagging me for a period of time, knowing a little bit about statistics. You mentioned earlier that 70% was, was the count of the total at the last census. That would imply we know what 100% is to determine, therefore, we've only counted 70%. So I'm wondering why we don't use more statistics, because it seems overwhelming. There's 325 billion, whatever the number is these days. Why don't we use more stat to determine populations?
So we actually, the Census Bureau actually tried to do that many years ago. But when you do that, it, it, how can I put this diplomatically? It becomes a partisan issue. So there was an opportunity, and the Census Bureau presented this, to actually use the statistics and the data they're collecting to sort of correct some of that historically undercounted information. Because not only are people being undercounted, some are being overcounted. And they're able to tell that. But there was one party that would have benefited more at the time with a more statistically adjusted count. And so they decided to leave it as it is, knowing, right, knowing that there's undercounts in certain populations. And so that's why the, the outreach is so targeted to those. And that's why it's so important in the state of California. We have the most of those hard to count populations. And we're at risk at losing a seat in the House of Representatives this time around if we, even if we just, you know, don't even focus on that, you know, hard to count population. So a lot at stake for the state of California. But yes, there, that was considered.
Yeah. I'm not surprised. I think that maybe the other approach might have been a little bit better, maybe get rid of the political because of the difficulties. And again, if you count 70%, I could probably get, you and I could probably get within 70% of the actual population, put our heads to it.
Yeah. Yeah. And the Census Bureau actually did a study on it and presented it. So they did try to change their process.
Yeah.
But it, it didn't fly with the Congress.
So it's outside our jurisdiction, I guess, in this case.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Thanks again for the great job you're doing. Questions?
I just have a quick question. And thank you, Stephanie. You really have been championing not just in San Rafael, but across the county. I think I've seen that presentation probably five times, because you've been out everywhere. Maybe you could just speak briefly. You focused on the hard to count, but for everybody else, all the other census tracts, what can they expect? Just walk us through it.
Yeah, so.
If they don't participate, what would happen then, the whole?
Right. So, so the number we showed for San Rafael, if you actually look at the whole county, and, and again, this would just be the hard to count communities, but really the whole county could take an almost $80 million hit over the 10-year period. So really, even though we will look at a specific census tract and say, this is the population, and it's $1,000, you know, per person, per year for 10 years. But the reality is, the money doesn't come targeted to San Rafael or to Marin City. The money, federal funding, comes to the county. So really, participation across the whole county really supports us getting the federal funding and the representation. Ethan also mentioned reapportionment and redistricting. That data's used for redistricting in every level of government, right? School boards, city council, right? Any, any district voting is impacted by this. So really, across the county, that's really more of the impact beyond the historically undercounted communities. The Census Bureau plans to have a whole PR campaign. The state of California is going to have a whole PR campaign. So there's going to be a lot of information shortly out there for really everyone in the county. For us, it's really been a focus on the historically undercounted. But really, a lot of the outreach that we're doing hits everyone, especially through our public libraries. We've been partnering with Marin County Office of Education. So our outreach really is, is, is beyond just those historically undercounted communities. So everyone's going to hear about it. But it's really important for everyone to participate because all of those things we listed, you know, impacts everyone in the county.
Right. So when you, but just really break it down. So we're going to get something in the mail, and it's going to look like, for all the other people, because we don't, yeah.
Yeah. So the week of March 12, everyone will receive a letter in the mail, not a postcard, a letter, inviting you to participate in the census. They will invite you to participate online. They'll give you an option to call. You will not receive a paper form in the first mailing. And so that's the, that's the first one you'll get. Then you'll get a series of either postcards or letters based on your response. If you respond right away, you won't get anything else in the mail. If you haven't responded, you'll keep getting either a postcard or a letter. The second to la, I think it's five total mailings. The second to last mailing will include a paper form. So for individuals who really prefer doing the paper form, if they just wait, they'll receive the paper form and be able to send it in. The other thing to note is that the Census Bureau decided that there are two census tracts that will, that first mailing will come in bilingual, Spanish and English. And those are the two Canal census tracts. So all the residents will receive all their materials in English and in Spanish. That won't be the case for anyone else in the county. And I don't know exactly what the, how the Census Bureau determines that, but they did let us know. You're, you have, you can complete the census, it's called self-response, between March 12 and the end of April, either online, by phone, or by paper. And then by the end of April, if you have not responded to the census, by mid-May, census takers will start knocking on doors. That's if you haven't completed the census. And that will go on from May until the end of July. The website where you can do your census online will actually be open until the end of July. So people can still respond after the end of April. And the Census Bureau really wants people to, you know, respond once and early. But the, the phone lines and the online option will be available till the end of July as well. And we're looking to keep some of our questionnaire assistance centers maybe open through the summer to assist people. And then by the end of July, they'll wrap it up so that they can prepare all this data and information to deliver it to the Congress and the President by the end of the year, this year, December.
And thank you for really breaking it down, because it's everyone in this room and everyone who's watching the meeting. You all have to fill it out, and you ask your neighbors to fill it out, and your relatives to fill it out. So it just takes that additional resources and for people who have a harder time filling it out. So thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Andrew?
Just a quick question. Are there repercussions for people, or repercussions people should know about if they inadvertently make mistakes on the
make mistakes on their census form when they return it? Either they undercount or overcount the population of their household, for example?
No, there aren't any repercussions. If people skip questions, and we don't know what the threshold is, if they've skipped a number of questions, a census taker might come back to them and look for additional information. But they really, you know, they're, what they're only, they're only really able to validate addresses, because that's how they send the census out. They send it out to every mailing address. They do not send it to post office boxes, though, PO boxes. So, anyone who has a PO box, they will actually hear from the Census Bureau in May. So, one of the things we're also doing in the county is promoting people who have a PO box to actually participate in the census early, even though they won't receive that mailed invitation. So, they can go to questionnaire assistance center. You can go online and participate in the census without having the code on the first letter. You can call up the Census Bureau. So, we're trying to get all that information out to our parts of our county that have PO boxes, so that they know they can participate before May if they choose to do so.
And Andrew, just a quick add-on to that, as it relates to your question about are there repercussions for an overcount? The Census Bureau anticipates some folks will be overcounted, and they take on the responsibility for reconciling that.
Yeah.
So, if two people list, you know, a college student, for example, you know, do you count them, you know, their residence at college, or do you count them at home? If they end up being counted twice, no harm, no foul for the individuals filling out the form, and they will have to reconcile and make it one, you know, they're counted once. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yep.
Hard to imagine how that might take place, but I'll assume that... Let me ask if there's anyone from the audience who'd like to ask a question of you, because there are many out there. Anyone from the audience have an inquiry for Stephanie? No?
Yes. Oh, yes. We are reaching out to older adults.
To be census takers?
Yes, we are. We've actually had several census jobs workshops at the YWCA. Yeah. And we fill up the room. So, we've had quite a few that have applied. Thanks for asking.
Good. I guess there's one more, at least.
One more?
Sure. It's an opportunity to get the information out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Gregory Andrew from San Rafael Meadows. I wasn't planning to speak on this, but I, since you're asking if there's questions. I think it was about a year ago, we got in the mail what seemed to be a census questionnaire that was highly suspect. I thought it was spam or a scam. And it was very invasive, list of questions that also implied that there would be repercussions for not responding or responding incorrectly. I just sat on it. What was that? Do you know what that was? Could you tell us about that?
Yeah. So, was it a long survey?
Very long.
Long, yeah. Okay. So, the Census Bureau, the Census Every 10 Years isn't the only survey that the Census Bureau sends out. They send out a lot of surveys. One of them is called the American Community Survey. It is sent out annually, and it is sent out to a subset of the population in the country. And it's used to supplement, help forecast. So, we do a full census every 10 years, and then, in between, to do forecasting, we do the American Community Survey. So, if people remember the long form, the census long form, that became the American Community Survey, and now, the decennial census is the short form. So, the census you'll be doing this time around is 10 questions, whereas the American Community Survey is much, much longer. It's sent to a smaller group, and it's their way to collect data in between the 10 years and get more information from the population that they surveyed in the decennial census. I will say, I have seen the envelopes and the letters, the drafts. The Census Bureau wants you to take this very seriously. The federal government wants you to take it very seriously, and they do use very formal and serious verbiage on those envelopes. Technically, it is against the law not to participate in the census. No one has ever been prosecuted for that. But it's mandated by the Constitution, so the expectation is that everyone will answer. And so, the Census Bureau tries to put in as much wording around that as possible to get people to participate. And the American Community Survey is, it's quite invasive, but it's, they're looking for that kind of carryover data. So, that went out last year. It went out again this year, and we were hoping they'd take a break this year, so it wouldn't confuse people. The Census Bureau also sends out census tests. So, last fall, they sent out a citizenship question census test that threw everybody off. So, they're always sending out surveys. But I would say, if something is, comes to you this March and it's suspect, there's a phone number that you can call to validate with the Census Bureau. And the Census Bureau will never ask you for your social security number. It doesn't cost you anything to prepare, to participate in the census. It's only 10 questions, and we have those 10 questions posted, the paper form, on our website, so that people can look and see. If those, if they're asking me more than these 10 things, it's not the 2020 census.
Good.
Another one was the labor statistics.
John, can you come up? We're on tape.
It's just another example. I don't know. There's a lot of surveys that are being out there. I was part of a labor statistics survey, so that's probably just some people, I'm not sure. But there are a lot of those going on, I guess. Is that right?
Yeah. So, there's no wonder that people have survey fatigue and that the response rates are going down. But the Census Bureau does have a multitude of surveys. And if you go to their website, you can see all of that as well, census.gov.
Well, you've got quite a task before you, and thank you for doing it with such enthusiasm. I think it's great.
My pleasure.
With that, thank you so much. I think we're at that point. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
We'll move on. Where am I? I don't know. We'll move on, then, to the public hearing, which is...
I move, we accept the report.
Oh, thank you. Oh, yeah, I wrote right through it. Okay. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Hi.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Hi.
Councilmember McCullough.
I'm Attorney Karius 40. And we'll move on now to the public hearing, item 7A, new 45-unit townhouse development, 350 Maridale. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Phillips. Good evening, council members. Tonight, you'll be, you have applications before you for a development in North San Rafael. The site is a 2.28-acre site, it's flat, former school site that's been used as a training school for developmentally-disabled adults for the past nearly 25 years, almost 30 years. There's an existing creek that abuts, that is on a portion of this property along the northern edge of the site. It is, the creek and some lands, upland from the creek are under the control of, under an easement from Marin County Flood Control District, with also some maintenance for, responsibility by the City of San Rafael for flood control. The property is a through-lot with frontages on both the Maridale roadside and on the Redwood Highway side. As you'll see from this aerial, this is the project site. It's directly across the highway from the Civic Center, just south of the Civic Center Smart Station, and it's in close proximity to Guide Dogs for the Blind and North Gate Mall, the North Gate Commercial Town Center. So, the proposed project is for 45 for-sale residential units. Forty-one of the units would be three-story townhomes. Four of the units would be stacked flats. Of the 45 units, there's nine below market rate proposed. That represents 20%. Five of those would be at the low-income level, meaning that they'd be affordable to low-income residents, which is 50 to 80% of the county median income, while four of them would be affordable to moderate-income households, which is 80 to 120% of the county median income, which is consistent with our inclusionary housing ordinance. Ninety-four parking spaces are proposed. Eighty-seven of those would be in garages, some of those tandem. And there'd be seven uncovered spaces throughout the site. The height of the building is 33 and 1/2 feet, which is to the midpoint of the roof, which is how height is measured on non-hillside properties. One other part of this project is a proposal to enhance and activate the area on the outside of the banks of the creek and create a pedestrian walkway. Also, would serve as a maintenance access for the Flood Control District. It would have units fronting on those areas with them opening up to those, to the creek area and the pedestrian area, kids' activity area, seating and landscaping with trees. So, this illustrates the site plan for the property. So, just to orient you, this is the northern edge with the creek. This would be the pedestrian creek promenade area. The units would be contained in nine different buildings with access that goes through the property and down little corridors. The property that borders it to the north is a mini-storage facility. And this is a representation of the architectural elevations of the building. So, there's a few different entitlements that are, have been applied for before you this evening. First is the planned development rezoning. The current zoning on the property is a specific planned development that only allows an adult daycare site for developmentally-disabled. So, the proposal is to redesignate that to allow for the residential use. That type of use is consistent, residential uses are consistent with the underlying general plan designation of this property, which is general commercial. Second entitlement is the design review permit, which is the permit that allows the city to review architecture, site planning, design, landscaping, site improvements. As part of this, there is a request to use the state parking rates as a concession under the state density bonus law to allow for tandem parking, which the standard city ordinance does not allow. But under the state density bonus law, tandem parking can be utilized. In addition, the tentative map, which is a subdivision action to create ownership units of these 45 units. As part of that, the city does have a requirement for any roadway, whether it's private or public, and in this case, this would be private, to meet the citywide standard, which would be almost 50, 50 to 60 feet width. So, an exception has been asked for to allow the 30-foot road within the interior of the development on the private streets. And then, lastly, is a use permit to allow for phasing of this project over two different phases. So, this has gone through both the Design Review Board and the Planning Commission. Started as a conceptual review, where the Design Review Board looked at it in July of 2018, provided some preliminary feedback on some design concepts. The applicant took that feedback, conducted their own neighborhood outreach, submitted their formal applications in 2019. And then, the formal review by the Design Review Board was in August of 2019. And the Design Review Board found that the architecture, site planning was all appropriate. The project had been refined to address their prior comments, and so, the Design Review Board recommended approval of the project unanimously. The Planning Commission then heard this matter in December of last year, about a month and a half ago, and they recommended approval of the project with a few minor additional conditions of approval for clarification unanimously as well. So, a little bit on the analysis. The project is within the current maximum density of 32 units per gross acre as proposed. The project proposes 20 units per gross acre. The iteration of design, they've, the project has evolved since its initial conception and has addressed many of the community comments that have been, that have come up with privacy and decks and so forth, and mass, as well as Design Review Board and Planning Commission comments. And lastly, it's consistent with the general plan and zoning ordinance. That was detailed in your staff report and the attached Planning Commission staff report. And as I previously mentioned, the subdivision ordinance exception is supported by both Fire Department and Public Works as being adequate to serve, road width adequate to serve this site of this size. And the use of the tandem parking for 10 of the parking spaces is allowable under the state density bonus as a concession that is automatically granted for projects which provide the required level of affordability. So, this project, because it does involve a planned development rezoning, was not, did not, was not exempt from CEQA, so we had to prepare an initial study. There was 20 different environmental topic areas prepared and analyzed. All of the impacts that were reviewed were found to be less than significant or less than significant with mitigation measures. Those mitigation measures were changes to the project or requirements during construction to address various topical areas. So, based on those findings, staff did prepare a draft mitigated negative declaration that was noticed for a 30-day public review period, which ended at the Planning Commission meeting in December. The Planning Commission conducted a hearing. We did receive two comments from responsible agencies. One was from Caltrans, and one was from the Department of Toxic and Substance Control. Staff did respond to both those comments at the Planning Commission hearing and also provided a written response that was included in your packet. Based on the comments, we did not find anything that needed, warranted any sort of change or modification to the draft initial study. Terms of public comments, prior to the two designer, prior and during the two Design Review Board meetings, most of the comments were generally supportive for this project. There were some specific comments raised about privacy and parking. So, a lot of those issues were revised with changes to the project, which the applicant will touch on a little bit about. And so, those, a lot of those comments seemed to go away. During the Planning Commission meeting, we received three comment letters. One was from Craig Murray, a resident in that area. A letter from the Civic Center Arms, San Rafael Meadows joint letter, and then, a letter from Sustainable San Rafael. Pretty much, all of the comment letters expressed support for the project. In the one letter from Craig Murray, there was some comments, and I think also from the San Rafael Meadows joint letter, there were some comments requesting that the impact fees that are generated by this project be used for projects specifically in that neighborhood. And staff did respond to that comment, that the impact fees that are collected, such as traffic mitigation and the parkland dedication, actually have specific purposes and cannot be used for general maintenance or improvements. They have to be used for items that are specified for traffic improvements in terms of capacity improvements and so forth. And then, all other direction of funds would have to be done through normal budgeting processes. So, then, there's been no new comments received since the noticing for this, for this hearing. So, in conclusion, staff recommends approval of this project. This is a creative redevelopment of a underutilized infill site with much-needed housing. The site is located in close proximity to major employers in San Rafael, as well as being close to a variety of transportation options. Project is consistent with the general plan, subdivision ordinance, zoning ordinance, and the Civic Center station area plan. All the environmental impacts have been reviewed and can be mitigated to less than significant levels. And as I previously noted, the, received positive recommendations from both the Design Review Board and Planning Commission. So, the recommended action, if you should so consider, is before you here, if that helps you later on. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I'll just inform the others that I did meet with the owner and the architect last week at their request to go through the plan, so I did have that opportunity, obviously, without conclusion. Questions, John? Andrew? No. Apparently, there are no questions open to the applicant if you have any further comments with regard to the project, and then, we'll open to the public. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to the council. Thank you very much for the city council members and the mayor for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is David Jacobson, and I'm a 60-year resident of San Rafael. Let me just adjust this mic a little bit. My role tonight is I'm a partner in the Ridgewood Property Clayton Properties, and we own the property at 350 Maridale in San Rafael that is before you tonight. With me tonight is also the development team, which is Michael Hooper of Campus Properties, and Adam Gartner, who's the project architect. I'm going to share with you just a brief background of the property, and then, I'll hand it off to Michael, who's going to share with you just a few quick details of the project. As noted, some of my comments might be redundant to what you already heard, so I'll try and keep them brief. The property is 2.2 acres and has three small office buildings today. It's currently zone planned development, as discussed. The thing that we want to stress is it only has a use permit for disabled adult day services for ours. And the reason that's important is we've had those tenants for the last 25 years. We, as a group, have supported them and enhanced the situation there. But over the last few years, the state of California has substantially cut back on the daily funding model for these organizations. One group went out of business three years ago, and we've tried to replace them for three years, and the building is sat empty while we've tried to do that. The second company has decided to move to a space that's 50% smaller so they can control their costs. So, we're going to be left with an empty site here in about 60 days. And with that in mind, I went down and visited the city a couple of years ago, knowing that this was kind of on the horizon, and talked to Rafi and others, and asked for guidance and asked for guidance on what would the city like to see here and what would be appropriate for the neighborhood. Also met with some of the neighbors to see what, what would be acceptable. Based on that situation, we all came to the conclusion that the right direction we should go is housing. And so we put together some ideas on what that would be. We reached out to a number of developers throughout the Bay Area. And we kind of honed in on a local developer who really knows Marin County. It's the campus group, Campus Properties Group, which is Michael Hooper, who will present tonight. They have had a very successful condominium implementation programs throughout the Bay Area, Silicon Valley. For example, I went and visited all their sites that they did and got successfully built there. I talked to the city, Foster City and Mountain View council members to see what reputation they had and how they felt about them. And I got nothing but high marks on how they conducted themselves and the results that they achieved. So we chose them to work with as the developer for our site. The second thing is we interviewed three different condominium architects, all that produced basically the vast majority of projects in the Bay Area. We wanted to bring a product to market that was both good for the market and good for the community, with somebody who has a reputation of success. And so we chose WHA, who's also here tonight, to talk to you. So we tried to spend a lot of time talking to our community, talking to the city, choosing wisely the developer and choosing wisely the architect to try and bring a project to the community that they liked. All of us who are partners have lived here our entire lives, here in Santa Fel, and we want something we can be proud of and we think is an asset to the community. So with that in mind, I'm going to hand it off to Michael Hooper, and he'll walk through the project in detail. But before I pass it off, any questions?
Any? Apparently not.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much for your time to listen to my overview, and please ask us any questions you have. We're very happy to try and share all the detail.
We shall, and thank you for your presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First of all, I'd like to thank staff. You all know that Coran left three or four weeks ago, and Rafi ended up with this project. And that presentation is better than mine. He hit all the highlights.
Capable guy.
I will try and rebrief. So 350 Merridale. This is the constraints map. We call it constraints to opportunities because we like to identify the constraints and then try to figure out a way of making them an opportunity. The freeway side of it is obviously a constraint because of the, of the noise, but there are some good opportunities too. The ridgeline views, we particularly liked, especially as you got higher. Obviously proximity to Smart, the Civic Center, and all the other employment areas. Our zoning framework, we start from the get-go and look at it from our standpoint, where things lie. As Rafi mentioned, general plan is general commercial. The PD, as David mentioned, is specific presently to adult daycare for adults. The Civic Center Smart Station Plan goes to a higher number of 43 dwelling units to the acre, but it's within 36 feet, 36-foot height limit. Our project is 20 dwelling units to the acre on three floors, gets to 45 units within that vital 36 feet. This is the site plan. It's previously mentioned, 2.2 acres. That includes half of the creek. The creek, the property line straddles the center line of, of the creek. So it's half on the neighboring property, half on ours. But we've got on our side a bank that's riprap filled with material that was put there long ago by the city, apparently. Nine BMRs, half of the, five of them moderate, excuse me, lows. Four of them moderates. Today, those numbers for a family of four would be about $250,000 for the low and about $450,000, maybe $475,000 for the moderates. That'll vary a little bit over time as the AMIs go up or down. We meet the city's parking requirement and the state's mandated parking requirement onsite. And we create additional parking spaces on Merridale. Totally nine spaces on Merridale. As Rafi mentioned, whoops, where's my pointer? Red is the pointer, Rafi? Yeah. So as Rafi mentions, we have a dead end here, and we're creating a through street to Merridale so traffic can do that loop. Right now, that is totally a dead end. You've got to back up onto private property. All these other gray areas are access roads to the units. Generally speaking, when we started this, we were looking to celebrate the creek and finish the Merridale frontage. So our architect came up with a concept that we've used successfully elsewhere, wherein you have, this is the landscape plan, but it will show you the same. All the entries are off the public spaces, along here, along here, along here, and along here, and a per se along here. These other, these are alleys between the units. They're three stories, so you drive into the alley. Most of the units have got two car side-by-side parking spaces. There are 10 that require tandem spaces. We really don't like tandem spaces, but it helps to change the price point of those particular units, and it helps to increase the density. We, this building, oh dear. I'll get this right. This building here is a little different in that it has the three-story units in the middle, but on the two ends, it has the four-stack flats, two in each case. On the ground floor over here is the parking for those units, and on the ground floor over here are the parking for those units and a small community room that spreads out onto the per se. So this is the landscape plan. We finally got agreement on a row of trees. We wanted to make this a dual-purpose accessway. The challenge was that it's also a maintenance road that the city uses to maintain the creek. And with a 25-foot setback, we were able to include a 10-to-15-foot-wide meandering pathway that doubled both as access to those units there and for maintenance vehicles to get back there to maintain the creek. We're all very happy about those trees, believe me. It was not easy to get them in. We did go, well, we started off the project by meeting the neighbors. I literally went to meet the most immediately affected neighbors on Los Flores, literally knocked on the door, went in their homes, went into their back gardens, took pictures. We saw what they saw. Over time, we're able to solicit the support of the homeowners association, as well as the Civic Center Arms Homeowners Association, by limiting, by addressing some of these feedbacks that we got. First feedback that we got was that we had a rather narrow range of units. When we introduced the stacked flats and the community center, we're able to broaden that range of units. And in so doing, we eliminated some of the larger units. We're concerned, obviously, about privacy, both across the street, on Los Flores, and also on the small apartment complex to the south. We obviously, through our architects, addressed that. We eliminated what was the coolest part of the project, I think, which was the roof decks. We would have loved to done limited number of roof decks because of the views of the hills and the wetlands and so forth around. But in deference to the homeowners, we decided to eliminate, eliminate that. And then we also eliminated quote-unquote the ADUs, because at the time, ADUs weren't permissible, shall we say. They may be now under state law, but they certainly weren't then. And the third piece was that we really weren't providing enough community space. We were trying to do that with the rooftop decks. Well, when we eliminated the rooftop decks, it became pretty apparent that we ought to provide some kind of community space, so that's what we did. Over time, we've garnered, I think, strong staff report. We've garnered support from Rafael Meadows Homeowners Association, Civic Center Arms Homeowners Association. As Rafi mentioned, we've gone unanimous at both design review and planning commission. We did go to two meetings of the multi-agency group. That's all the jurisdictional agencies at the Civic Center. And over time, they too came on board and actually supported us in getting those trees that we wanted. That worked out very well, getting even silent support from the Army Corps of Engineers, Department of Toxic Control, and all the rest of them was not easy. So this is the architecture. I've got Adam here tonight if you'd like to hear more about that and see more about it. But this basically came from something that we presented to DRB. Adam showed them three or four different projects of a similar type that he had done. And they went towards a project down in Dublin. This reflects, it's not the same as Dublin, but it's very similar. So project benefits, 45 much-needed units close to Smart and employment centers, 20% BMRs for lower mod, improved pedestrian and traffic circulation, indoor-outdoor community facility, dual-purpose use of the Creek Promenade with activity for kids, Galinas Creek enhancements, completes the Merridale frontage and activates the creek. So that's what I've got for you tonight. Be very happy to answer any questions. I'll have Adam come up and tell you a bit more about the architecture.
And thank you for the presentation. Questions, questions, questions? Apparently none. You've done a good job of describing the project, it seems. So thank you for doing so. Is that it for the group, if you will? Has anyone else from the immediate development group? In which case, let's open it further to the public, any public comment with regard to this proposal at this stage. Hi.
Good evening, Mayor Phillips, council members. I'm Craig Murray with Civic Center Arms Association, president. So I do want to thank staff and certainly the development team for working with the neighborhood. It's been a great process, have been very thorough, addressed all the concerns as recently discussed. And there, and Rafi did mention some of the response back to our concerns. As you may know, it's a former county area that was annexed. So some of, and Merridale's the main road in and out of the area. So there's still some kind of lingering blight conditions and capital improvement needs, such as a city dirt parking lot that is, actually, the council approved the bike-ped plan, showing that's to be paved with diagonal parking. There's no designated bike routes that connects Smart to, to the Porto Suelo Hill. There's, there's not an activated light at the North San Pedro and the Porto Suelo Hill bike trail that trigger light, so it's difficult for bikes getting through. There's no curbs, sidewalks, gutters as part of this county area, certain parts where folks have to walk out in the street. So if we have seniors at Oakmont coming in and further densification of this site as well, then these will all be further exacerbated in the area. So I think the city does need to look at it. I do appreciate staff looking at the $150,000 on traffic impact fees, almost $20,000 in development impact fees, and nearly $90,000 in parks fees that hopefully could be used in the area, but it sounded like there's other needs. But you're the policymakers, hopefully you could take a walk, take a look at some of the concerns in the area and see what you could do to try to make some improvements in that part of North Santa Fel. Again, thanks very much to the staff and the development team. Fine job. We appreciate they could have made 200 apartments in the area and further saturate and densify the area. And it's going to be homeowners and high-quality projects, so thanks very much.
And thank you, Craig, for your, your input and recommendation suggestion. We're pretty familiar with the area, but certainly more can be done. So thanks for bringing that to our attention as well. Thanks, Craig.
Kate Powers. I really appreciate treating the creek as an amenity in this area, and I hope that we have more development that makes way for the creek to kind of be restored as much as it can be. This is kind of late in the process, but I just wanted to draw attention to the need for the planning projects to look at the transportation issue in terms of when we build housing or development, what are the destination of the people that'll be working or living there, that, where they'll be going? And if they, I don't know if we could bring them up, but if the destinations are, the Civic Center or the office buildings on the east side of Civic Center Drive, then we really need a pathway to get to folks easily over there. And it's been talked at, about at the BPAC meetings and also at a couple of the North Merridale meetings about the need for a pathway on the south side of the Civic Center Station. For the folks that live in the Rafael Meadows and who will be living in this development also, we need a safe and comfortable lit way for them to get under the highway. Otherwise, they have to walk through the Rafael Meadows neighborhood, out, cross Walter Place and up and around, or around to that pathway and around. And it's, it would just be easier if they could cross on the south side. I also think that in terms of promoting transit, at some point in the project, is looking at bus stops and where the buses stop, because I think they're on Los Ranchitos as opposed to in this area. And Kate, I know you're on the Marin Transit Board, but looking at where, on these developments along the corridor, how, how we can incentivize transit use and bike and ped use when we're planning the projects. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Next person, please. I know a couple of are anxious to come on up. Andrew, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Gregory Andrew from Santa Fel Meadows. And I'm certainly aware that my neighborhood association has participated in this, so I'm not going to say anything against the project. Some questions having reviewed the staff report. The first is about reference to the subdivision exemption. And just to confirm that this exemption is for the width of the easement and the pavement. There's a statement in there about the maximum building height and exclusion to the maximum building height limit shall be presented by section 1416120 of the ordinance. I just, I'm curious why that is in there for the planned development? If staff could maybe address that, if you could ask staff to address that.
We'll ask the staff at the conclusion of the public input.
Thank you. Also related to that is a PD zoning high-density H1, HR1 request, and why was that in there? The second is regarding the Civic Station Area Plan. Was there any consideration for retail? As is, as the plan calls for, the area south of the station along Merridale Road and Redwood Highway is an appropriate place for mixed-use developments with retail below residential units. And was that ever discussed or considered during the planning process? Last, two more. Circulation, what Ms. Powers just referred to, can, was there any consideration of the city and the developer and working with Smart on that improving that, kind of that trough that's cut through the, the south side of the Smart right-of-way going underneath the highway? And then the lastly, question about the phase construction. What, not that this is going to happen, but what happens to the southern part of the property if Phase Two just doesn't come? What happens to that part of the parcel if Phase Two doesn't happen? So I have these written out, and I can hand them to.
Please, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your input. Evening, Bill.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Bill Carney, I'm speaking this evening for the, as Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee for Economic Development and Affordable Housing. And you do have a brief letter from the committee, but I wanted to stress a couple of points. The CAC does support the project, which will bring much-needed housing to San Rafael and also help stimulate further residential development in the Civic Center Station area. Forty-five townhouses located close to transit and also to several major employment centers will help house the workforce required to support local economic vitality. The project's proximity to trains, buses, bike, and pedestrian paths provides convenient alternatives to driving as well. To further that end, we do urge the city and the developer to closely coordinate the proposed creekside path with DPW's planned pathway improvements in the vicinity of the SMART station to make that connection. The committee noted the thoughtful unit designs which provide for privacy while accommodating the potential for shared living arrangements, also known as roommates, right? So these work well for that, and I think that's an insightful part of the development. The CAC recommends your favorable consideration of the project. Thank you.
And thanks for the input on behalf of the CAC. John.
John Reynolds, resident of the canal and member of First John Smith's Church and also a member, I'm not speaking for MOC, but I'm just raising that. Appreciate this. This is good. We need to provide more housing. This is another occasion to do that. Having the nine below market rate and even below that possibilities, housing that's actually to be bought and that kind of thing, that's very good. The question about the possibility of junior accessory dwelling units and accessory dwelling units, that how would we address that? That's a question. I don't know. You didn't want to have that provided as part of this project, but then there was a new law, state law about that. Would it be helpful to have accessory dwelling units there? Would the developer consider that? Or is that going to be a problem for development there? Is that going to be a problem for providing workforce housing there? The goal is, of course, provide workforce housing, and I appreciate that. And not only firefighters and police and social workers, teachers, but people definitely will work in the businesses around there, North Gate, that kind of thing, office workers and customer service workers. So I appreciate the overall goal of doing this, and it's very good, well-designed and environmentally sensitive, like a lot of people have said. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Back, perhaps you could address questions that were presented.
Yeah, let me try to go through these. So first, related to subdivision exception, confirm that this is specific to and only relating to the private street easement width and pavement width. That is correct. The city standard, whether it's public or private for any roadway, is 60-foot right-of-way, 40-foot paved width. So with a development of this size, that is pretty excessive in terms of the amount of paving, given the amount of traffic. So it's not uncommon for a subdivision exception like this to have a 30-foot right-of-way with, or public-private right-of-way with 20-foot paved width. And that is what is being, was requested, and that was what was supported by the staff. In terms of a statement in the Plan Development Ordinance about maximum building height with an exclusion to the maximum building height as prescribed by Section 1416120. So correct, the maximum building height for this area is 36 feet. The zoning ordinance does have a provision that relates to any property in the city of San Rafael, which is what is contained in 1416120, that allows for certain features to not be counted as building height. So for example, if it's an architectural feature, a cupola, mechanical equipment, an elevator overrun or staircase overrun on a roof, where it's not part of the main building, that is not considered building height. So that's, it was included in the Plan Development District because that's common throughout the city and every zoning district. So it just made it consistent. In terms of the Civic Center Station Area Plan consistency, that is correct. There were suggestions to explore mixed-use and retail. I think that was something that was mentioned to the developer early on, but I think they might have a better answer of why they did not pursue any sort of retail component or mixed-use component. I can only assume that the market that they saw did not support that, but they might be able to shed some light on that if you're interested. And then was there any consideration of having the developer work with SMART to improve pedestrian access between Marydale Road, Civic Center Drive, under Highway 101? So that's a little bit difficult of a question, because we get into an issue of nexus, a project of 45 units having to solve a existing condition that has, you know, off-site improvements required dealing with SMART. It's not really in proportionality with the amount of foot traffic or people they will be bringing to the area. So from a nexus standpoint, it's not something we could require that they do those off-site improvements. So that, it wasn't something that was explored. We did not ask them to do that, and nor do I think it would be equitable to ask one developer to take that on. Oh, yeah. And the, there was one other comment there about why the PD District was designed to mirror the high-density residential. So the high-density residential zoning district and the general commercial land use designation are very similar in terms of the type of density that they allow. So the reason why the high-density residential was selected for the development standards is because the type of product, the adjacent apartments, the terms of setbacks, height, and lot coverage, building separation, that seemed to be the best fit to mirror the Plan Development District after, given this type of product. So allowing some separation of buildings, having some space in between them, maintaining the 36-foot height limit. So that's why that was selected. It actually, as designed, the project proposes a lot less density than allowed under the high-density residential or the general commercial. And there was one last question, I think, that came up from another speaker about accessory dwelling units. So the applicant did explore accessory dwelling units and including those in some of the, I think it was at one time, four or five of the units to have a junior unit or an accessory unit in the, in the building. At the time, the state law was different, as we know, that changes every so often. And so at the time, there were some parking considerations and parking concerns that had come up, and there were also some concerns from the community about adding more intensity, per se, to the development. So the applicant removed that from the proposal. However, the Plan Development zoning does allow the possibility of putting second dwelling units in. We are required by state law to treat and allow second dwelling units in all districts. So that is in the Plan Development District, so the developer or a future owner could at some point come back and propose second units. And there are, some of the units are set up with a bonus room on the ground floor that could possibly be a small, little accessory dwelling unit, so it's not precluding that sort of development. So it's still possible, it's just not currently proposed with this application.
Thanks, thanks for the input. Any follow-up questions? I guess with regard to the retail, I, for one, would probably prefer housing or retail at that location, so that doesn't frankly upset me. Any comments, questions?
Yes, please.
Just a brief question for Rafi. The, one of the, what appears to be one of the positives that have been cited by the community in reaction to the developer's proposal is that there's an improved pedestrian circulation element, enabling people who otherwise would dead-end at the end of the north end of Redwood Highway to come through on these private roads and join up with Marydale. Is there in fact an easement that's going to be recorded against the property to provide for that in perpetuity? Or is this a private roadway that could potentially be closed in the future, thereby cutting off that added circulation?
I don't believe that the pedestrian circulation was, that was being discussed, was through the property, but on the periphery of the property. So along the frontages, there is no proposal for any sort of public, public access easement within, internally within the development.
Is there any additional comment to that?
Yeah, there is a public access easement through the center and along the top by the creek.
Okay.
So members of the public can quite legitimately drive or walk through the project.
Great. That's terrific. That was my question. Thanks.
Final comments? Final comment? My comments are, I'm encouraged by this project. I think it makes a lot of sense in that particular area. Appreciate your involvement with the community and witness by this evening. Solidary projects such as this or any other, if you will, come before us where there's not at least a majority of those saying, no, not, not at that location. We don't see that this evening. Also, the CAC and their involvement, recommendation, we highly regard that as well. So I'm, I'm in favor of this particular development. Thank you for bringing it to us. With that, the motion would be appropriate with regard to the first item.
I'll make a motion after I, just a quick comment to echo what you just said. I also appreciate the incorporation of the neighborhood and community feedback, often that people have reached out too much too late in the process and the fact that you went out early. I mean, what you showed us is superior, and I'm delighted that the DRB gave you a unanimous thumbs up on the architecture. I think it'll blend really well into that surrounding. So having said that.
If I could make a.
Yeah, I can see you were like.
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just want to echo what the mayor and vice mayor have said and add my own two cents, which is I'm really pleased that this project has come in with the kind of, not only community outreach, but the concessions that you've made in order to address concerns raised by all kinds of stakeholders in the community. And I'm sure that it wasn't easy. I'm sure that it affects your bottom line in fairly significant ways. But David, your comment about being a lifelong resident of San Rafael and trying to make a difference in the community in which you live, I take that on faith and, and really appreciate the commitment you've made to make this project fit into its surroundings. I do want to editorialize a little bit by way of context. In August of 2012, this council received the proposed station area plan. And at the time, it was controversial, because there were those in the neighborhood, in the area around the station, within the station area, who felt that the station area plan, if accepted, would result in far greater density than is currently present in the area. This, to my knowledge, is the first multifamily project within the ambit of the station area that has come before us in the eight years since the acceptance of that station area plan. And it's particularly gratifying to see that we have a project that comes in that is respectful of the surrounding community, does not exploit all of the density that's provided in the station area plan, although under the right circumstances, the right project in the right place, it makes sense to use what's provided in the station area plan. But you haven't done that, and we'll see what the future holds for that plan. But I think that yours is just an outstanding addition to the community insofar as we understand it now. And I'm hopeful that both phases get done and all 45 units are made available to the members of our community.
Thank you very much. I also want to thank the planning department, because the things that you just highlighted, they gave, Rafi and his team gave me great guidance on how to get where we are today. And a big thanks go to his team to help us find the right spot to sit for everybody.
Thank you. And was that a motion or a second? Where are we at? Did anybody make the motion yet? Was that a?
I'd be happy.
You started, I know. I think that was a second.
No, you jumped in. Go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, sure. So I, do you want them done in serially? Separately?
Yeah, let's do it separately.
Okay. Then I move that we adopt the resolution adopting, adopting the mitigated neck-deck and mitigation monitoring and reporting program.
Second.
Move a second roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm at our carries four zero and.
I move that we pass the ordinance to print approving the rezoning from Plan Development District to a revised PD District.
Second.
Move a second roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm at our carries four zero and.
I also move that we adopt the resolution conditionally approving the environmental and design review permit, use permit, tentative parcel map, and subdivision exception applications for the project.
Second.
Move a second roll call.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm at our carries four zero. We're off and running. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll move on, we'll move on to item eight, interim financial update.
Good evening again, mayor and council. Hi.
Yes, I was just going to comment to Nadine, because I know she's going to be the prime. I assure Jim we'd be out of here at 8:30, so no pressure.
Eight thirty. No pressure.
I know, I know. Another promise.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Something about. I promise.
Christine.
My intro will be very, very short, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
I do want to express appreciation to Nadine and her team, Von Bach in particular, and all the directors, managers, and analysts who have worked very, very hard to bring forward a mid-year budget. It's a lot of work. I in particular want to acknowledge Nadine for really upping our game as it relates to the budget process and financial transparency, and she's, continues to do a really remarkable job on the behalf of the city and the community. So thank you, Nadine. At a very high level and big picture, Nadine is going to tell you that we're in good shape financially, but I think it's important to note that although we've been very prudent fiscally around our obligations to pension and other post-employment benefits, that our, the trends and projections related to revenue and expense moving forward, there is a dark cloud on the horizon, perhaps, that we need to be really mindful of, and Nadine is watching that very closely and will continue to update us on thoughts and ideas about how we move forward.
You might mention this has gone to the Finance Committee as well. Thank you. Nadine, good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council members, and thank you, Christine, for the introduction. So I'm here tonight briefly to present to you the interim budget updates, including personnel changes and amendments that we would like to recommend. And as the mayor noted, we did bring this to the City Council Finance Committee on January 23rd, which is a public meeting. In reviewing the first six months of the fiscal year for the general fund, we're recommending to increase revenues at about 200K. Most of this recommended increase in revenue is due to higher-than-anticipated sales tax receipts for the first four months of the year, and higher-than-expected revenues and plan checks and building permit fees, which are related to large projects that are truly one-time in nature. So we would recommend that we increase revenues by $200,000, respectively, due to a combination of firefighter vacancies and difficulty hiring and retaining firefighters especially. The staff is recommending to increase overtime. So we're expecting overtime to increase this year by about $600,000 more than originally budgeted. That's about 20% higher. So it's a large amount, although this increase is somewhat offset by vacancies. So we do have a fair amount of vacancies that will be offsetting the overtime fees. It's still higher than anticipated, and the current budget won't be able to fully absorb that. So our recommendation is that we use the $200,000 increase in revenues and allocate that to the two expenses by the same amount, $200,000. Additionally, I'd like to note, and as Christine said, that the trend of expenses is continuing to show itself. Expenses are increasing at a faster rate than revenues, and it's really a result of high-market demand for goods and services as well as inflation. And so this trend truly gets us in the pocket. It, you know, doesn't allow us to fund city goals the way that we'd like to, and in some cases are either underfunded or just unfunded in general. Should this continue, the city might see keeping current levels of services becoming more difficult, so they're at risk for that. Moving on to other funds, in reviewing the first six months of the fiscal year, other fund activity, we are recommending an increase to appropriations and approximately $633,000. These proposed increases are all covered by available fund balance that's been accumulated over the past several years specifically for purposes like this. So projects, payoff of debt, and one-time building improvements to the library. And then lastly, as detailed in the staff report, very well detailed, which was great, we have a few areas of staffing that we recommend reclassifying to most effectively serve the community and comply with, or, you know, be on track with city goals. These personnel changes are budget-neutral, mainly because staff has agreed to reduce other line items so that they can offset any increases that the personnel changes cause. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions. I'm here to answer any questions related to budget increases, and Shabani is here to respond to any questions. And Shabani is here to respond to any questions related to personnel changes.
Questions? And first of all, thank you again for an outstanding report. It's comforting to hear you address the issues before us that we have to address, but nevertheless in a reasonable and timely fashion, so thanks for helping us with that. Questions? Anyone? No?
No, and just the comment that, I think I said this before, your staff report was excellent and a model of clarity, so much appreciated.
It's coming from an attorney, by the way, so, you know.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You know, it's good. Anyone from the public wish to address this on this item? Seeing none, we will return for additional comments, questions or perhaps a motion to accept a resolution.
I'll just make, I'll just make a quick comment to echo both what the mayor and councilmember McCullough has already said about the clarity of the report, the thoroughness of it. And it wasn't really, wasn't highlighted as much, but how these changes are in sync with the Together San Rafael Initiative for which the city of San Rafael has received awards, award, an award, from the League of Cities. So I really, it's, it's, it's great to be personifying, to be actually putting into practice the things that we want to put into practice. It's one thing to give it lip service, but I was really delighted to read how it was meshing with that vision. So unless my colleagues have.
Is that a motion?
Additional comment. I move, let me see, where are we? Oh, just we adopt the resolution.
The resolution.
One second.
And second, and roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I matter carries four zero. Thanks again, Nadine, excellent job. Council members' reports, request for future agenda items, anything? I'll just give you a couple of quick things. Today, I was honored to introduce Matt Windrim to Rotary as the guest speaker to talk about Wildfire and did an excellent job, he's a really good guy. Made a presentation to Smith Ranch folks and that was, I don't, I was there, but it was ages ago, I think we've been there now, but it's quite an impressive facility. It's a little bit out of the way, but it's, it's quite a, quite a thing they have there. I was going to comment on the Smart editorial, but I think I'll pass on that. I'm starting to get a headache already. So unless there are other comments, nothing there, unless there are other comments, we shall adjourn.